Well, Spectrum Communication says it's six o'clock.
Well, so does Apple.
Apple's always right.
Just like on your phone.
It's tied to my phone, so.
Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll open the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 6, 2025, and I'll call the meeting to order. Our first item of business on the agenda will not be, will be stricken tonight. We strike off. The minutes weren't available for the meeting. So with that being said, we'll move on to new business, which is a public hearing to rezoning from residential mobile home to residential medium density in a minor subdivision at 617 Ellsworth Street, approximately 2.054 acres into two parcels, the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 3, Township 3 North, Range 56 West. So the public hearing is now open, and we'll begin with our staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission. Thank you for carving out your Wednesday evening for this. Missing out on Back to the Blue over in Fort Morgan BBQ, in case you're going to go there. Tomorrow night is the community appreciation barbecue at the Library Park, in case you want to work. And from what I hear, every year Colorado lamb, sorry, not Colorado lamb processors, fresh meat processors, they donate bison, and so they have a new product, a Dyson Dog, like a hot dog that's Dyson, bison meat. So that'll be on the menu tomorrow. If that picks your interest.
Those are good.
Bison hot dog.
Yeah. So I know that's totally irrelevant to this, but they're close to that, yes. As you said, yeah, so there's two items here for a rezoning and then a subdivision of the property. So this is just north of the fairgrounds. You can see them out there. There's the ball fields and then the parking area, maybe on Fourth of July when it fills out, out to Ellsworth there. Essentially, cutting the parcel pretty much in half. So as a quick background on the property itself, the current property owner, one of the current property owners' names, Mr. Val Munoz, he acquired the property in January of 2024, and then a few months later added Mr. Vince Mesa to the deed. And their intention in acquiring the property was to subdivide for each of their intended uses that is allowed by city code. They've both come in and spoken with our office numerous times about what their intentions were out there, and we carved out and gave them a path forward and how to make that happen. And so if the subdivision is approved and it's rezoned, then each of the owners will take full ownership of the two new parcels. So one will belong to Mr. Munoz, one will belong to Mr. Mesa. And then when it comes to the rezoning from mobile home to residential medium density, the, one of the benefits of that is that it will bring the property into compliance with current land use code, because our current code states that if you have mobile home zoning, it's a minimum of five acres, and this one is only two acres anyway. And then furthermore, properties to the east and to the west have long been used for residential, but they're currently zoned industrial for some reason. Can tell you why. And so by changing this to residential medium density, it'll have the same, close by is the zoning district, so it'll start tipping the scales in that direction for the properties around there. And then your packet has all the necessary documentation, including the proposed plats and then all the supporting documentation. So this is page one of the plat, all the standard information, including all, on the left side is all of the signature blocks. On the right side, it just notes that are relevant, but all the boxes that we have in our land use code as far as making sure everything is in place. And this is the main visual. I'll zoom in a little bit more on this here in a bit, but you have this in your packet as well. So the process itself, the minor subdivision, I'll come back to this. Our code gives guidelines, of course, for all that's necessary for a minor subdivision. It's basically when there's fewer than four lots being created. Again, there's just two here. Our reviews step, we have the subdivision and rezoning. So minor subdivision has a sketch plan requirement, but as well as a final plat requirement. The zoning just goes to the final side of things. So our code gives authority to the director at their discretion to skip any of these steps if they don't think it's impactful or super relevant. So the sketch plan, I would ahead and skip that for this one, because it's not a huge impact to the surrounding area and didn't require a whole lot of factors, because it was previously a part of the subdivisions, a lot of the infrastructure's in place. So if everything goes forward, it'll be, it'll be recorded at the county clerk and reporter's office and go forward from there. We do have public hearing requirements or public notice requirements. Those are all the boxes that have been checked. So on the right side there is a notification that went out to all the property owners within 300 feet. The picture there is the site itself with the public notice sign, and then the left two are just screenshots from our website on the public notice that was placed there as well. Our land use code, our land use code does point to the same submittal requirements of a major subdivision as a minor subdivision, but then, as I mentioned before about the discretion of the director, there's also waiving of any steps that are allowed that are not necessary or relevant to the consideration. So within our code, it goes over all the design standards, and if you're going to do a subdivision, you have to make sure all these are adequately addressed. For a brand-new subdivision, like an annexation, for instance, when everything is brand-new from the street to the rows of the infrastructure, these really dive into the weeds and need to be, but given the circumstances here, not all of these are relevant, because most of them are in place already. I'll go through a couple of them. So the lots, we do have the minimum lot size requirements and dimension factors, and our minimum lot size requirement for the zoning is 4,500 square feet. 44,000 and 43,000 square feet's the minimum, so it at far exceeds what that requirement is. When it comes to easement, there's currently just one easement on the property. The far west side of the property, 30 feet, that's been there for a long time. As we understand it, that is in place for access to the former brush lateral ditch that runs along the north side of the property, which is no longer, that no longer exists. The property owners want to keep the easement in place for a potential future subdivision of Lot 1, if that happens, to maintain access there for any additional parcels of land that might be created that are not adjacent to Ellsworth. So another way to phrase that, if you just cut that one in half that way, in the future, if that was to happen, they would still have access to that property. So then we keep that, keep that there for that reason. There's no current utility easements located on the site, so we do need to confirm with the property owner and the engineer and see if there's any utility easements that do need to be replaced. Most of the utilities run along the front of the property, but if they're within the property itself, then the utility easement probably should be placed there, and then seeing if there's any that run from the back or might come in from the other side over by Jordan Place to the east, just to cover all of our bases. Water, sanitary sewer utilities, those are all kind of in place already. And going back a little bit to the plat itself, so with a lot of these older properties, they have some weird factors to them. It's just a general learning point. So if you notice the legal description, it's really funky, if I can use that authentic term. And I learned from the county this past year, if you ever see a legal description and it has the D R M Y, they call it dreamy. And so the older parts of brush that don't really have good historical records as to when properties changed hand or modifications were made, if there's nothing on file, they kind of just label that as a, this is an oddball. And so when things like this happen, we're able to clean it up a little bit. That second one, you can see the typical property, that's a standard, really simple legal description. I just pulled one randomly from the Sunset North Edition. So that compared to the top one, you can see it's a lot simpler. And then the bottom one is a meets and bounds description. And so a lot of times, those will be in addition to a legal description. But on a plat map, they always have a starting point and then the direction that you go. And so you, you read that and then you just follow along here and see the direction that it goes and the degree that it goes and how far it goes and that kind of stuff. But with this one, because it was older, when the surveyor was doing their work, they did find different rebar in place. So using the left one as example, found number five rebar, that's the size, with one and a half inch yellow plastic cap, and then land surveyor numbers. That's the licensed surveyor who put that out there, so you can go online and do a search and see who that was that actually did that. But the one on the right, the line with the Xs on it, that's an existing fence, and the two that are there, the witness corners, when a witness corner is essentially when the land surveyor at some point in history goes out and they determine that that point is difficult to find, they'll put kind of an approximate both of those there. And so the surveyor that did the work for this plat, they basically just put those two together based on where they thought the property line should be. And the property line is actually inside of the fence, the neighbor's fence, according to this land surveyor. So that's something that we've, we've talked with the applicant about, and they'll have to sort that out with the neighbor who now has, if this gets approved, a fence on their property. And that'll be just a friendly neighborly conclusion that they get to come up with.
Is it showing two feet on the property?
Yeah, two feet, yeah, on the north side, two feet, and then two and a half feet on the one that runs north and south.
So where's the fence located?
The fence is right here. And then this is the property line itself. So this fence belongs to these folks here on this property.
But it's not on their property.
Correct, it's not on their property. But they did.
How can it belong to them if it's not on their property?
Because they thought that this was the property line here.
Oh.
There. So, yeah, so they went up, I think, here and they're using that, whereas the surveyor, this surveyor interpreted it as no, it actually should be here between those two.
Okay.
Occasionally, this kind of thing comes up in our office, not too often, but someone will come in and say, my neighbor's fence is on my property. What do we do? And we can't really confirm it's on their property or not, so we always encourage them to get a surveyor if they really want to confirm. Most of the time, most people don't really care. They're like, it's six inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, not a big deal. Doesn't matter to me. That's six, six less inches up. We're about maintaining that kind of thing. But since the fence is there, yeah, that's something that they'll have to sort out. So with compatibility to our comprehensive plan, anytime we do that, we want to point and see if this is in line with the direction the city is going. So there's three main goals. And as a reminder about our comprehensive plan, there's goals, and then underneath that are specific strategies or actions you can take place. I didn't put the actions on there, but here's three goals that I think that this does conform to as it pertains to our comprehensive plan. In other words, I think that our, this proposal of rezoning and subdividing does align with our comprehensive plan. We have not received any phone calls or comments regarding this application from any citizens around. So that just points to the recommendation. So the subdivision is minimal in impact. I think it's beneficial for the property owner and the intended use is beneficial to the community. So staff does recommend approval from the Planning Commission for City Council with two conditions. The first one, a title report, we're still ironing that out, if that was completed or not. And if not, then that will need to get done. That's one of the requirements for a subdivision, to see if there's any encumbrances that need to be factored in to the plat itself that would cause there to be any changes. And then the second one, I mentioned the utilities earlier, if any existing utilities run in the property or through the property, and if there are any of those, that those appropriate locations be established on the plat or reflected on the plat as well. So that is my presentation. Any questions?
What's on the property now? Is it just, is it empty or?
It is not empty. There is currently a mobile home that is on there that was placed. When was that put under this?
Two years ago.
Okay. So that's the only structure that's currently, that's not true, because there's an old shed on there, old wooden shed as well.
Is that old wooden shed, an old school building that was located there years ago?
We heard it was a church or school. We're not sure what it was.
Okay, yeah, there's like a historical background to that number.
Okay.
Cool. The other thing, Tyler, when you talked about the utilities, for some reason, I, I thought kind of through the center of it, wasn't there like a water or sewer line?
There, from the, let me go back to this. Yeah, I believe you're right. I think a sewer line ran, Vince, you might know this, like through here.
Yeah. And there is a clean out right there, or the manhole there that there's access to for now. I mean, you can get through a gate to it.
So you know where all of it is.
The city has to get in there to get it.
Okay, good.
There, we used, might check with Dale, maybe we already have, but there is a story on that, whether that was, yeah, so there is some story, but that's just FYI.
Okay. So the, the existing mobile homes on Lot 1?
Lot 2.
Lot 2?
Yeah, Lot 2. And so that would be, if we rezoned it to mobile home, but that would simply just be grandfathered in, which has happened elsewhere in town as well. There's mobile home, a mobile home on a residential medium density lot.
So wherever the utility lines are at currently, like the mains out there, are they on the plat somewhere that shows true easement?
That is what I mentioned, that I want to confirm we're all located at, if there's any additional ones, and then put those on the plat.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, I guess not.
Nope, it seems pretty straightforward and seems like it would kind of clean up the area a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Would you have anything you'd like to add or?
No, just like when he was talking about that two foot six on each corner, I talked to the owner about it, and I told him it was okay, but if you were to ever sell his property, I might take that two foot back from him, you know, if he ever sells it. I told him it's fine for now, but that's the only thing I have to say about it.
Are you going to build another house there?
No, I don't think so. I want to put a shop in there, but that's all.
The Val, though, gentleman who would be the owner of Lot 1, once this all goes through and they separate ownership, is that he's intending on putting at least one house on there, possibly more. And that's why I made the comment about the easement on the left side. If he does, he'd put on the north side.
And this is all in the flood zone?
Yes, correct.
Would he have to split that to put two homes on one lot?
Um, not necessarily. It depends. If, if he's just going to build it and then rent it out technically, he could, but if he's going to sell it, then yeah, they have to have, have to have their own. They could get complicated, I guess, and have some type of shared condominium-ish sort of thing. But the simplest way would be to subdivide it. But that's still up in the air. That's a lot of.
It's down the road.
Okay. I don't see any members of the public here to make any comments, so I guess we can skip, skip through that section. Anything else that needs to be shared?
Nah, it's a good thing.
Okay. Do I hear a hearing to, or a motion to close the, the hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
I second it. Okay, it's been moved, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Okay. So we'll move on to the motion for action on this proposed rezoning and minor subdivision. Anyone would like to put that in?
I move we approve the, do I need to spell out the subdivision? Mesa's minus, minor subdivision at 617 Ellsworth Street with the staff recommended conditions.
I have a question, that is, on this planning commission agenda, it says the property is 2.054 acres?
And it says 2.02 Ellsworth.
That's right.
Good catch.
Good catch. I don't know which one is right then. How about you say that, because I got a bullet from documentation from the engineer.
Wonder what that?
If we just say 2.0, then we're right. Yeah. Approximately, the word approximately is in there, so that saves us.
So is the motion then for the subdivision or the rezoning?
Oh, yeah, there would be probably two different motions, yeah.
Oh, so we, oh, okay. So we got to, I move to rezone the residential mobile home to residential medium density. So we have to do that first, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I hear a second.
Second then.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that carries. And then we'll move on to the subdivision portion. We could get a motion for the subdivision.
I'll move we approve the, the minor subdivision, Mesa subdivision with the staff recommended conditions.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second then.
Seconded. That we accept the minor subdivision with the recommendations from the staff attached to that. Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that carries. All right.
We'll go to the City Council Monday for official approval. This was just a recommendation to Council.
Our next item is Chapter 16 Code Updates. Tyler will be updating this on here.
So this is another thing that you have to have any formal action on. This is, I presented this to Council two months ago or so, a month and a half ago, but I wanted to get a portion of it in front of the Planning Commission. And this is proposed land use changes, so Chapter 16 items. Through our day-to-day work that we do, we come across scenarios where we're looking at code and we say, that should be changed, or that doesn't make sense here. That would make more sense if we did that. And so we have actually a long laundry list, not just Chapter 16, but a lot of items due out city code that we're wanting to modify. So I'm going to run through these with you, and then if you have any comments or feedback, whether you agree, disagree, or think we should go a different direction with it, just let me know. Some are more impactful than others. The first one is, is as it pertains to a public hearing notice, us changing it, because the state always is changing their requirements, us updating it just to point to whatever the state says, but also incorporating the city website now. We are allowed to do that, and so we thought we would utilize our website as opposed to always having to rely on the newspaper and the timeline and waiting period that's necessary. It's much easier if we just put it on our website in 30 seconds and be done with it, as opposed to having to spend money, and we got to plan out eight days and make sure that they get it and all that kind of stuff. So simplifying that, usable open space, this comes up every now and then, because we have a lot of people who love cement, and they want to put a lot of cement on their property. And so one of the challenges that we have with that is that our augmentation plan on the water side of things, we get a certain number of credits or percentage of our credits based on the overall city assumptions of how much infiltration happens on all the individual sites. And so the more concrete that goes in, then that's the less water that's going in and going into our storm system, which goes elsewhere, which doesn't count for that. And so we try to minimize that on some level, so we came up with this language here just to add on to the end of that, to imply that as people want to add cement, our intention is to keep it out of the stormwater systems as much as reasonably possible. An example of that might be on this side of town where we have the street, the curb and gutter, and then we have a green strip before you get to the sidewalk. And so that area where typically there's trees, but not always, people tired of maintaining that, so they want to put cement in there. So the more that you do that, then the more the water that comes off is now just all going down into the stormwater. So it doesn't seem like much, but the more it happens, it just collectively adds up.
Is, is there anything in the codes that say how much surface area it has to be before you can't put it into the?
No, we kind of kicked that around as an idea of doing that. We, we do have a requirement in your backyard to keep 30% of it open space, which is what this one is here. And, and it talks about in here, swimming pool, pool areas, things that are considered recreation areas, but outside of that, no, not, not the whole property, just the, just back there.
Okay.
So modular manufactured homes. This is a, I'm not sure why we had manufactured homes when this was put in initially. It might have just been the way that the word has been changed and how it's utilized, but I would like to replace the word manufactured with modular. In our code, this is the district use table of all the different uses. So it would get changed there, changed when it comes to parking, but then change what our definition is of it. So if you look at a manufactured home, a manufactured home is basically when it's manufactured, so inside of a facility somewhere. So that could be a mobile home or a modular home. And a lot of people don't quite understand the difference. They use manufactured as a mobile home and a modular home, and we need to draw a distinction between that, just for clarity. And so basically, what they're typically referred to as mobile homes, but they're actually manufactured homes. So manufactured homes slash mobile homes, those are built to a different building code standard, HUD standard, Federal Government Standard, whereas a modular home is built to the same standards if this house was built on site, it's to build, the IVC codes or IRC codes. So different building code standards, and so drawing a distinction between both of those and reflecting that in our code. Quick quiz, does anybody know where you can put, what zoning district you can put a modular home in in brush?
Residential low density, I believe.
Yeah, all of them. You're actually doing all of them.
Any residential?
Yeah, we had an issue a while ago over in my neighborhood now, where I think it was Greg Dardanus wanted to put a modular home over there. There's a lot of pushback on it, saying that's going to ruin the values, but our code doesn't prohibit that at all from him doing that. And so it got brought to Council, and Council ultimately said, go for it. And you would never know it was a modular home.
There's quite a, there's a few over there.
That's not actually.
Yeah, and you can't, you can't.
I don't think that was a modular home. That was an existing home moved on site.
It was still modular, though, in the sense that it was pre-manufactured elsewhere. It was an older one.
It was?
Yeah.
He brought the old house in?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a pre-manufactured house, and, but overall, the modular is, is, we all base anything on our experience in our head, what we tie things to. And so a lot of times, people think of modular, it's just a square or a rectangle put on there. It's pretty bland and ugly. But modular homes have actually been modified quite a bit in their production, but they look pretty nice where most people would never know it was a modular house.
And they put them on basements and, yeah, they're not bad.
Yeah, put them on permanent foundations, yeah. Sometimes full, full basements do. So us just cleaning that up, making it a little more applicable nowadays. Fencing is another one. The highlighted areas in there, we have contradictories. We have four feet, three feet, three feet, three and a half feet.
Thirty-six inches.
Yeah. I mean, we point to.
Forty-eight inches.
So.
Eighteen inches.
When we talked to Council, they were okay with us as going four feet. There's a challenge with three feet, and the three feet was in the sign of light areas, sign of light.
Line of sight.
Line of sight.
Even though this says three and a half feet, is meant, so when someone pulls up at an intersection, they can look, and there's not something blocking their way there. But the issue is you have four feet on the side, and you got to bring your fence down a foot around the corners, which is just kind of weird in designing and implementing that. It's a lot of extra work. And at the intersections, using this one as an example, shrubs are supposed to be no higher than three feet, and then trees are supposed to be no, all the limbs no lower than 10 feet. So you have this window there. And so the idea was, as you pull up in a car and you look, the biggest issue we have around town isn't typically fences and shrubs, it's usually cars that are parked there that you're trying to look around the cars anyway. But just for, for simplicity, Council thought, just make it four feet, four feet is fine. Still open style, though, you're not supposed to have closed-in fences, so you can still see. Um, still open style though, you're not supposed to have closed-in fences, you can still see through it, but we did talk a little bit about that open side of it and defining that a little bit more, so that way we, um, don't have miniature privacy fences along the front. And then adding eighteen inches, clarifying that, that's the red line there.
So the, the fence then, where it's the clear vision area, has to be thirty feet back from the corner?
That's the idea, yeah. Is there more to that thought?
Um, well, what, George, maybe you can figure this out for us. What would that be from the corner to the, to the diagonal line, distance-wise?
Uh, thirty feet.
No, to the center, on the center line of it?
Oh, got it, the geometry there?
Yeah.
A square, so B square. So ninety, ninety, seven hundred and, well, you gotta divide it by half of that, so.
I was just curious.
I don't have the geometry brain.
Okay.
I think I'm curious. All right, the non-conforming, um, lots, so we have this in here that if something happens to a property and repairs need to happen, they have to happen within a certain timeframe, within twelve months. So if it's non-conforming, um, we'll, we'll use the example that we talked about here, where we have the mobile home that's in a, soon to be hopefully a residential medium density. So it's technically non-conforming, because it's gonna be grandfathered in, if something happened to it, according to code, they, um, they can't repair it, period. But, because it only lists commercial and industrial places where you can repair it. I was like, what was up with that, and, and they would have to repair it within twelve months, starting and then complete within eighteen months. And so it didn't make any sense as to why just those two, so my thought was, all the zoning districts except mobile homes should be able to do that. Now, it's kind of complicated, so I'm gonna let it sink in for a moment.
So they can repair it, they just can't replace it with the same thing, because then it would be new co, new, up to the new, if we grandfather one in, if it burns down, can't grandfather another one in, right? They can't.
It would have to come to conformance of that, correct? Yeah, so this is for, um, for the repairs. Well, no, that's not true, well, irrespective of the extent of damage, so our code is written, if it's more than fifty percent, then, um, that's when I think the catalyst is, it's earlier.
Fifty percent of the?
Damage.
Volume of the home or the?
The value.
Structure?
Yeah, the value of it.
Or the val, you're just basing it on value?
Yeah, 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 correct, not so much an area. So this, yeah, this takes.
So and then what, 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 what numbers do you, you base it on?
Well, this one is irrespective, so if it's ninety percent damage, yeah, they can still fix it.
But I mean, as far as the values?
You, I look at current, well, you have the land value, which we can.
So you just go to the county accessory?
And look at the market, you got market value, you just have the standard assessed value.
Okay, so that's what that would be. Okay.
Um, for trash, this is not a big one, but, uh, one that we thought was relevant, so for dumpsters, uh, our code requires that they're enclosed on four sides, one side needs to have a gate on it, but that gate is so problematic for a trash apartment. You're in snow and they get older and more now, and it becomes a headache trying to pull the gate open and close it back. So not, so eliminating that is a requirement, leaving that to people to determine if they want to have a gate.
Like where you keep your trash in the alleyways?
Uh, more so like at a commercial, like a family dollar, um, or apartment complex.
So the large-sized.
Yeah. But still have the quality, um, three sides. And this would just be adding this consultant fees element within the fee schedule, it's, it's in small print right now at the bottom of it, but make it more obvious. So this is with, someone's gonna do a project and we need to hire consultants, they have to pay for the consultants, not us. So not make it like a, what could be, appear to be a small sneaky line that they might.
Yeah, that's why I've always spelled, because most people would look at that and then, now people go, small print, you did it on purpose, I just wanted it, so everyone would see it.
Need to be part of the whole thing.
A little more transparency. Um, and then this last one, this is actually new, uh, I hadn't taken this one to council yet, which we bring back before, so carports, carports are a huge pain for us in our office, because they, um, they don't, for what they're intended to do, they don't fit well within our land use code or even building code, I would say. Most of the lots around here are pretty small, people want to buy carports to protect their cars when you get the hail out here, and every time of year, from June to August, because of the weather that comes in, people are running out and buying carports. Most of them unpermitted, and so we gotta follow up and say, no, you gotta have a permit, and then allow them to have them in place already, and we gotta deal with that, which is a big pain. But the problem with carports is that where you want to put them is typically on a driveway, and our code states that anything that's closer to the house, the principal structure, closer than ten feet, then becomes part of the main structure. Um, and then it has to be factored in, in setbacks as well as in building code components as far as fire safety. And the idea is, is that, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm guessing it was, been tested and proved, because it's a standard across the industry, that from a property to the line, or a house to the property line, is a five-feet minimum setback requirement, and then the next neighbor has that same one, so it's a ten-foot separation. So the idea is that if this one goes up in flames, there's enough separation there where it's not gonna come over to that one, or at least a smaller amount, even though you have a fence in the middle that could catch fire. It's beside the point.
And that's the, that's the roof lines, correct?
Correct, yeah, so that has the ease comes out, that, um, right there. So with carports, um, we thought about making an exception to that, because a lot of the properties here, they don't have, they have a driveway on the side, and to cover it, you're really close to the property line, there's no way to keep that five-foot separation there. So our accessory structures are allowed to be just two feet away, but they have to be more than ten feet away normally. So we thought, well, what if we made the exception to the carports where they can be just two feet away there, but when it comes to the fire component, they have to be made of approved non-combustible material. So if something happens to the house, the carport won't go open flames and then spread accordingly. So that'll give people a little bit more room to do carports, although it's still gonna cause some issues. Or we kind of halfway joked around, halfway joked around, about changing our minimum, um, building permit requirement up for carports to two hundred feet, so if someone, so if they get a ten by twenty, which is standard, we don't have to worry about it, we can do whatever you want, we don't want to deal with it.
If you'd open a can of worms there or not?
Yeah, technically you would. But, sort of, but we wouldn't have to worry about it anymore.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can.
I'd be more worried about the carport catching fire and catching my house on fire, my house catching my carport on fire.
Car going up in flames or something like that.
Yeah.
So those are, that's all the proposed changes.
Um, can we back up, I got a, had a question on that, um, uh, the fencing and screening of the dumpsters? So they, it has to either be opaque wooden, brick or masonry, so they couldn't use like a chain link fence for that enclosure?
The, well, is there another comment behind that?
Uh, no, I was just curious.
We, so over at Central School, they, they put up, um, unless I'm mistaken, with another one, no, they did put up fencing, never mind, it was the four side that they covered in, but, um, someone, I guess, could, but if they put something around it, some kind of screening to fill in or block off, it would still serve the intent of those things. But if it was all just a six-foot chain link fence, no, they couldn't do that.
So, um, so the idea behind the whole, uh, code is to, um.
Screen block.
I mean, block for an eyesore-type situation?
Since it's junk trash, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this would leave one side open, um, but it would still be addressed on three sides.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's, makes sense, so they, you've seen those chain link fences where they slide the slats in that, would, I mean, would that qualify as a screen?
Yes, yeah, because you can't see through it.
Okay. Sounds like you've been busy.
Just the Tiffany auction.
Okay, do we have anything else? Do you have anything else to add or?
No, that's it.
Okay.
So we have no comments, then we're gonna revise all that, um, run it by our attorney, and then we'll take it to city council for a formal approval and modification and change.
Okay, well, I could get a motion for adjournment in a second, and then get out of here.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
And if you're curious, um, I encourage you to keep an eye out for all the changes that we're talking about with other elements of code, because there's some weird stuff in our code, there's a whole section about public dances, it's very fascinating. Well, it was put in place, I think in like nineteen oh nine or something like that, and so why it was put in place, we can only speculate, but, um.
Do you want a Patrick Swayze thing going on?
Yeah. Dirty dancing a lot in the street.
Yeah, we got all those lights downtown, you know?
Yeah, we gotta be able to have some dancing.